I'll let the cameras on.
Family, you're on.
I checked the box.
Did you check the box?
Yes.
To turn it on.
Where?
This person's trying to say.
She's at the hall. You see the orders? He wants the order to sign. He needs to sign this. I wish I had signed this. He's not. Your son is flat. He has two. He's too far. It says two. It says four.
Sign in. I signed her. Okay. Thank you.
If he wishes to do that. You know, like you.
May.
I can go up there.
Oh.
Well, I see him on the floor.
Well, I got you.
I'm going to check your box.
I'm just going to wrap these. There's chairs.
Be a little bit.
Yeah, I have a chair. Have a little chair.
Good job. Good night.
You need to sign in. And if you want to speak. I'm going to get my stuff. He really knows what happens. He talks about that. I mean, it's like a small walk now. You guys get here. He goes here. My daughter's coming. She wants to be here. 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 She wants to be here.
Have a little chair. There we go.
Good job. Good night.
Chairs are here. Y'all are sitting. We need to sign in. And if you want to speak. I'm going to get my stuff. Thank you so much. He really knows what happens. He talks about that. I mean, it's like a small walk now. You guys get here. He goes here. I think he's going to go. 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 He really knows what happens. He talks about that. I mean, it's like a small walk now. You guys get here. He goes here. Hi. Are we going to have that? The Paul confirmers coming?
They both said they're coming.
Okay. Somebody's sitting here. Huh? Isn't that? I was just wanting to saw this down here. That was good. Maybe. It suits me, but.
Good job. Good job.
Got a little bit of headache right now. I don't know. How are you? Very good. Are we going to have that? The Paul confirmers coming?
They both said they're coming.
Okay. Somebody's sitting here. Huh? Isn't that? Oh, okay. I was just wanting to saw this down here. That was good. It might be. It suits me, but.
Good job. Good job.
Got a little bit of headache right now. I don't know. How are you? Very good. You're going on this room. Huh? Well, that's all. Yeah, me and John, we're going to tag team it. But hopefully we hold that for minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Sam. You want to speak? I want to speak. I want to speak. I want to speak. I want to speak. I'm going to sign in. I want to speak. She said she's a teenager. She said all she'll be here. They have lineups, so they can't let you in. It was exciting. I could have had the whole chairs up there. Yeah. She's got. Yeah. Sign in. If you want to speak, you can check out. She's got. Yeah. Sign in. If you want to speak, you can check out. She's got. 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 Daddy's going to speak. Why you two want to step here? Okay. Yes. Hi. Okay. Are we going to have that? The Paul confirmers coming?
They both said they're coming.
Okay. Somebody's sitting here. Huh? Isn't that? Oh, okay. I was just wanting to saw this down here. That was good. It might be. It suits me, but. Thank you.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
Got a little bit of headache right now. I don't know. How are you? Very good. You're going on this room? Huh? Well, that's all. Yeah, me and John, we're going to tag team it. But hopefully we hold that for minutes. Thank you, Sam. You want to speak? I want to speak. 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 Got a little bit of headache right now. I don't know. How are you? Very good. You're going on this room? Huh? Well, that's all. Yeah, me and John, we're going to tag team it. But hopefully we hold that for minutes. Thank you, Sam. You want to speak? I want to speak. 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 This is my watch. Okay. Here. I'm going to check. 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 I want to speak. 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 So when he gets in, he's going to sign. Allen Barner. He's going to be gone. Yeah. You're right here. You're right here.
Oh, you're going to be here?
Yeah. You're right next to me.
All right. Oh.
Okay. Fine.
I'm supposed to be way down there. Change.
Right. Okay. I forgot. We kind of let her know that we'll have a sign feeding. Okay.
What you studying? I've got paperwork today and I've been busy doing other things.
Okay. Well, oh, yeah, the first thing I think. These two, these are the letters. Yes. Okay.
The law makes this. That you get on my secret phone. When he's here asking to sign. He's feeling like it's something that's really small. He's, he was going to be 11, but I guess he changed it to nine. Let him say that with nine. I would use half a inch or something like that. 200 square feet. When he's here asking for it. For us to help. Most of the people who get scared. Please feel all right here.
Okay. That makes sense, yeah.
They're all talking to their neighbors first, but they're great fun. I've got a hard time saying. Somebody asked me and I heard you said.
Yeah.
Just like they did. Because you're obviously. That's. This is what. They probably will look like.
Yes. 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 Because you're obviously. That's. This is what. They probably will look like. Yes. 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 Yes.
I think it takes, I believe, eight splits to make that one. This property was brought in two parts.
Yeah. So you just want to.
I got control of their right off work. So they were like, I'm not interested. Lights. We need to go with the law. Maybe. We did the same thing. I love that. This gentleman is asking to. I actually did all these out much than about three years ago. It's already approved. Back to my house. It's already approved. Really? Okay. Which I think that was exactly right. She did it.
Okay. So these are all within some bag essentially. I don't think we're within the rule. Within the rules, it's from, it's like, there's no question. It's just a question. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, and I'll just, this, I got. I got the answer to my question. I guess in the process, he's buying this land and it's contingent on this. Because I was like, I didn't see anything at the time that the owner had given permission. But I did get the real estate contract, so I'll just say that.
We've had several.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Because I was like, I didn't see it at the time, but he brought that into us. When I was down there talking to her, that the real estate contract. So the owner, I guess, I would say implied, disagreed with this. But have we determined that? Then we, is just variance because he's changed it?
Yes.
Okay.
In my opinion, you're in the same opinion?
Well, yes. I, I think that, I guess I was confused. Mike threw a wrench in there with me. Because then I don't understand if he knows that it's gone down or why he thought that.
I spoke to him later and I spoke to him to see.
Okay. All right. Yeah. If it's. Yeah. Because it's not about changing. I guess we need to make sure.
Do we have minutes from last meeting?
We don't. Because I did not type them up.
Okay. So we won't?
No, we won't need to, yeah, to do the minutes. So I was kind of saying, it's kind of, we just make sure this, know that this is a special meeting. Because it's not our normal meeting. And I guess everybody needs to clarify. Because it was not, it was, it was published correctly. But it's not about, I guess we make sure. A lot of, I guess when I'm reading these letters, is that there's confusion on whether this is giving. Rezone. It's not rezoned.
This is a special meeting because. Excuse me, I got a call.
Okay. Um, I would, or, yeah, maybe just because of circumstances, we didn't have. Meetings for the past two. Is it been in three months or two months?
Been three months.
Three months.
Well, the commissioners, I met with them. They said to have this meeting. And so, yeah. That's, that's wrong. I missed that.
Okay. I guess we need to wait for him now to get that first phone call.
I, I can start.
Oh, yeah, I want to go ahead and do that. Okay.
Okay. 6:05, I'm going to start the meeting of the Board of Zone Impedes, Scott County. We haven't had a meeting for the last couple of months. This is kind of a special call meeting because with some staffing changes, the lady that was running it, she passed away, had some sickness. So it's been a few months since we've had a meeting. This one was pulled special because people have been waiting. The way we'll run the meeting, this is normally a five-person board. It takes a majority of the five to pass anything. There is only three members of the board here tonight. For anything to pass, everybody has to agree. If it's two, one, it's not majority of who is here. State law is it has to be three yeses to pass anything. Let everybody know that. At this point, then I, since it's only a three-member quorum, I have to ask the applicant if he wants to go on with the meeting or push it on until we have a, hopefully a bigger quorum.
Well, the purchase, John, is contingent if I'm the approval. So if it's not approved, then I have to appeal and I'll have John Kraft, my attorney, come and we'll proceed accordingly. So my answer is yes, let's move forward.
Okay. That's, I have to give you that opportunity. And I'm going to wait. The other board member has a little bit of an emergency. He'll take care of that. We'll get it started when he gets back in here. Everybody can set tight a little bit. We'll let everybody talk. Make sure everybody's signed in that's here. And everybody's put a check beside their name. Wants to speak. If at some point in time during the meeting, even if you didn't put a check beside your name and you decide you want to speak, we'll give you that opportunity. We just have a mark who's going to speak so I can kind of allot for time. I'm going to ask everybody that does want to speak to try to keep it within, keep it within three minutes. And don't repeat over and over what the person before you has said. You can say, I've, I've. Sometimes we spend five minutes going over the same thing over and over and over. And these meetings can go two hours by that. You say, I agree with what the speaker before me said or whatever, but let's try to keep it to new points. And say your feelings. We'll try to keep it within three minutes. Otherwise, we're going to be here for a long time now. But like I said, even if you didn't put a checkmark beside your name, if you decide you want to speak, you will have that opportunity the way we do it. The applicant will present his proposal to the board. We'll listen to it. Hopefully get clarification of what he's asking for. Then at that point in time, I'll open up the meeting to the public portion. Let anyone who wants to speak. Against it, everybody gets their chance. Anyone who wants to speak for it, they get their chance. At that point, when everybody's had their say, I will close the public portion of the meeting and put, direct your questions that you have about the project or what's going on towards the board, not towards the applicant. And we'll try to make notes and get everyone's questions answered. If, so we have, at that point, I'll close the public portion. We will ask the applicant questions regarding concerns you all have. If we think they're applicable, at that point in time, when everybody's done, we'll open it up further. That's the process. And at that point in time, you're good, you're ready?
I'm good. My apologies. I got a son who doesn't have his license and football practice ran over, so I'm trying to get you to pick up. Sorry.
Do you want to explain to just everybody that this isn't a zoning change? This is not, explain exactly what the request is?
This is not a zoning change. I've seen on several people's letters that they wrote in that subdivision and all that. This is not a subdivision approval. This is a request to allow additional splits over the four that are already allowed on a property. At that point, looks like the applicant meets the acreage and the road front footage. So what he is asking for here tonight, I believe, he can come up, is not a subdivision approval. That is approved by a different board. This is not a subdivision. It is an additional split issue. And I believe that's what we'll be ruling on tonight.
Would you say this? Additional split? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Additional splits. At this point, I'll invite the applicant to come up and present his project.
John, I appreciate it. Thank you for giving a quorum here this evening. Actually, the splits are very similar to what one of the neighbors did across the street a few years ago, where you can have four splits. So this is really nothing more than that, other than I'm requesting an additional five. So dividing the 34 acres into nine splits. One of them of the splits, Paul, will stay with the house. There's a 2,000 square foot house on a property with a coal barn. So one of the splits will be six acres, staying with the house. And then there will be, so that's number one. And then there will be four north of it and four wrapping around us over on Leota Road. So there's a total of nine. The first step in the contingency to buy the property, and it's been listed with Jack Bridgewater for quite some time. One of my contingencies was to have it surveyed. And Mark Gardner went out and surveyed it, the county surveyor, and I went per his guidelines and suggestions to make everything 200 feet of road frontage and a minimum of two acres. So all nine splits will have at least 200 feet of road frontage and will be at least two acres or more. And some of them are big as eight acres. And then we went around the house of six. The second contingency that I had on there was that we had to get approval and we also had to do the soil tests. So somebody obviously probably saw the, the guy that does the soil test in this county is Spence. And I view Spence probably for the last 10 years. The last splits that I did was out in Lexington, 38 acres, and I divided that into nine splits. In fact, out there, John, one of the houses that they took a loan out was a million and four. So Charlie, these houses are going to be very similar. And your question was, is there going to be trailer park? No, I don't like trailers and I will not approve trailers. All the restrictions have been given to the board, which I gave to John a minute ago. It hasn't been finalized. There's another stack there, John. The restrictions in the other paperclip. So minimum square footage is the 1,200 square feet minimum and no trailers. So those are the main restrictions. I did put a restriction in there on the two-acre lots, not to have animals. Sometimes if you live next to a goat or whatever, some of the neighbors don't like that. However, if a buyer buys the eight acres, if they want to join 4H or whatever, to me, that's exciting. I lived in 4H in Michigan for 20 years. So I like 4H. This is my 25th split and/or subdivision that I've done, John, over the last 40 years. In the beginning, when I started doing my Michigan poll, the farmers would drive by and yell at me and give me the finger and so forth. But you just have to let that roll off your back. Everything I do is first class and professional, and I want it to look as good as the homes across the street. And not only did I talk to Charlie, I talked to the neighbor right across the street and has a nice looking home. I've had some comments that maybe I have to be the person to help clean up the street also. You know, we got trashed. We got extra vehicles sitting in the yards. We got things that I wouldn't be too proud of living next to or across the street of, but that's exciting.
It's pronounced falsen, not houseen. Falsen.
See, I, I got a little physical problem I'm going through and it affects my speech as well and my memory. But anyway, that's a brief overview. This is the last step. We moved to closing. All from, it was supposed to take place already because of the meeting. We, Missy and I spent some time working through the newbie part of her, of her new job. And I, I think with the help of city zoning and so forth, we, we got it pretty well handled. And she did a great job, by the way, to work her way through it with her attorneys. Had a meeting this afternoon with her attorneys. So that's a brief overview. Nine, nine splits is my only request. We'll meet the guidelines other than the 200 feet of road frontage and two acres. And the soil test has been done and the survey, boundary survey has been completed and waiting for the approval to put the splits in a paper. So if you have any questions, be more glad to answer.
We may get to that after the public portion.
If you had any questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm now going to open up the public portion for anyone that wants to speak. I'll try to read the names off the list. The. Who are the first person that signed this?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, that's probably me. I think I'll hold for now. Is it Rattlerman?
Rattlerman, yes. You're declining to speak at this point? The next one down is Mayor Lou Hood.
Well, I, I didn't check my, my name or anything, but I mean.
Oh, excuse me.
But with the checkmarks down in their name.
Okay. So you're not speaking?
I mean, I've, I've got small kids. I'd rather not have vehicles that would come with nine extra properties. That's my only point.
Kelly Hood?
I think I will speak at this point. Being the guy that has a junk vehicle sitting around.
In fact, out there, John, one of the houses that they took a loan out was a million and four. So Charlie, these houses are going to be very similar. And your question was, is there going to be trailer park? No, I don't like trailers and I will not approve trailers. All the restrictions have been given to the board, at least I gave it to John a minute ago. They haven't been finalized. There's another stack there, John, the restrictions in the other paperclip. So minimum square footage is the 1,200 square feet minimum and no trailers. So those are the main restrictions. I did put a restriction in there on the two acre lots, not to have animals. Sometimes if you live next to a goat or whatever, some of the neighbors don't like that. However, if a buyer buys the eight acres, if they want to join 4H or whatever, to me that's exciting. I lived in 4H in Michigan for 20 years. So I like 4H. This is my 25th split and/or subdivision that I've done, John, over the last 40 years. In the beginning, when I started doing my Michigan poll, the farmers would drive by and yell at me and give me the finger and so forth, but you just have to let that roll off your back. Everything I do is first class and professional, and I wanted to look as good as the homes across the street. And not only did I talk to Charlie, I talked to the neighbor right across the street and has a nice looking home. I've had some comments that maybe I ought to be the person to help clean up the street also. You know, we got trashed, we got extra vehicles sitting in the yards, we got things that I wouldn't be too proud of living next to or across the street of, but that's exciting.
It's pronounced falsa, not house. Falsa.
Falsa. See, I got a little physical problem I'm going through and it affects my speech as well as my memory. But anyway, that's a brief overview. This is the last step. We moved to closing all from, it was supposed to take place already because of the meeting. And Missy and I spent some time working through the newbie part of her new job. And I think with the help of city zoning and so forth, we got it pretty well handled. And she did a great job, by the way, to work her way through it with her attorneys. Had a meeting this afternoon with her attorneys. So that's a brief overview. Nine splits is my only request, will meet the guidelines, other than the 200 feet of road frontage and two acres. And the soil test has been done and the boundary survey has been completed and waiting for the approval to put the splits in a paper. So if you have any questions, be more glad to answer.
We may get to that after the public portion.
Have you had it?
Okay.
Thank you. And now I'm going to open up the public portion for anyone that wants to speak. I'll try to read the names off the list. Who are the first person that signed this list?
Oh, that's probably me. I call Holt for now. Is it Rattlerman?
Rattlerman, yes. You're declining to speak at this point? The next one down is Mary Lou Hood.
Well, I didn't check my name or anything, but I mean...
Oh, excuse me.
But with the check marks down their name.
Okay. So you're not speaking?
I mean, I've got small kids. I'd rather not have vehicles that would come with nine extra properties. That's my only point.
Okay. Kelly Hood?
I think I will speak at this point. Being the guy that has a junk vehicle sitting around, I'd like to know if anybody here in this room has an issue with that. If you do, I will solve it for you. That's not going to be solved for this fellow right here. So is there anybody in the room that has an issue with that?
Let's back up. That's not what we're here about.
No, you get in the process to speak. I'm asking seriously.
It's regarding this thing, though. I don't want to...
That falls, that was just stated here in this meeting. So has anybody had any issues with the vehicles? Speaking now for a real piece?
And what's your name?
Kelly Hood.
Kelly Hood?
Yes, sir.
And where are you in relation to?
2775, also right across the street.
You're directly across the street, one of the lots. How big is your property?
Five acres.
Let's see it here, okay? Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
And Mary Lou Hood, we had...
I think it's Janette.
Janette Hood?
Janette.
Okay.
Guess what? Kelly's my son. And what I think for everyone's...
Do you live on the same property as him?
I own that 2775.
Okay.
And for everyone, you know, trash or treasure, these are his treasures. And they aren't junk, they're runnable. He's a mechanic, he fixes things. So that aside, I'm just wondering about...
That's just not an issue in this board, as far as that.
Who do we talk to about that?
Excuse me?
Who do we talk to about that?
About allowing your tractors to sit in the yard?
I mean, he brought it up that it's an eyesore and that's why he thinks that it needs to be cleaned up. I mean, these are in row vehicles. They're not junk, they're not piled on. Okay, moving on.
That really doesn't have anything to do with it.
It's interesting that he brought it up and then, you know, anyway. What about sewers?
Excuse me?
Sewers?
This will have to be on septic system. The ground has to be tested. It has to pass. No matter what we do here tonight, each of these lots will have to pass a soil test from the county health department to approve it before there's a building permit issue.
Okay.
No matter what we do here tonight, if, I wouldn't imagine that would happen out there, but I'm not a soil scientist. If they come out there and test the soil and says this will not percolate, we can't put a mound system here, we can't put a whatever, you can't build a house on it. They will not issue a building permit.
Is that per lot?
That is per lot.
Okay. And then what about the issue that Mary brought up as far as vehicles? If it's 200 per lot that has road frontage, is that off of Alsop?
Yes.
So there will be driveways off of Alsop?
Excuse me? Two of them are off of Leota.
Two off of Leota?
I'll count here. One, two, three, four, five, six of them are off of Alsop. And one, two, three, and then I think in the corner, is that the original home?
No, that corner, for Mark Gardner, had the 200 road frontage, picks up Leota and Alsop both.
Okay.
So that driveway logically would be on Leota Road.
Basically, there's four off of Leota, Leota Road, and five off of Alsop.
So directly across the street from 2775, what do we have?
Yes, I do not have the addresses here. If you want to point your property out to me on this map, I think I know which one it is by the size that it is. Is this you here?
It's five acres. Does that look like five?
Yeah, it looks like around that to me. Could be this one here.
No, it's not way down there.
I think it's probably got to be this one.
So tell me about that, then? What do we have across the street?
If you put that in conjunction, right there is a bend in the road.
Yes.
Right here is the bend in the road. You'll have a piece similar in size to what your place is. And then there's some smaller ones, and then there's a much larger parcel. Does that make sense?
So essentially like three to four?
One, two, three. Four. You lay here, it will be here. And probably starve in, right here at the bend of the road.
Yeah.
There is one. There will be another. There will be another. And then there is a large one here that's probably the eight acre piece. And then you have two acres coming. Does that make sense, off the road?
Yes.
Brian Hood?
What's the smallest acreage you can put in septic?
In this county, without having to ask for special permission, two acres. Other counties, it is smaller. And sometimes people come to this board with requests for a smaller parcel and all that.
So we're pushing the limits right now with this two acre lots?
Hmm, yes, but Clark County allows it on one.
I understand.
Right. We're at two. Two is our, we're one of the largest around, though. We did this board and the commissioners get a survey of surrounding counties and to possibly lower the acreage requirements with the new septic systems that don't require that much because we are one of the largest around in the state as far as what we require. Back to the farm usage, they thought that was a problem for us eating up farm ground by making people have two acres or more when it really may not be necessary.
It really boils down to the percolation.
Right.
You know?
You can do it on a half an acre if the ground...
If it percolates, you don't have a problem. You know, Scott County's development said we want it on two acres. So that's the bend on the lot size. I'm just looking at health and safety. Yeah. It comes down to the science. It comes down to the science and the test. But two acres is a large lot.
But those are requirements. As of right now, those are requirements.
I understand. That's the rules. The rule of four houses, too.
Yes.
You know, I'd like to see us stick with that. The rules are there for a reason. Just like the septic, I can't put on half an acre. That's all I got to say?
And you were Brian, right?
Correct.
Well, Mark he also spoke. Terry Jones?
Hi, John. Terry Jones. Appreciate, pleasure to be able to speak in front of the appearance board. And I'd like to, as long as, make a couple statements here. As long as the obligations are all met with road frontage and the acreage. I, as a taxpayer, family township, lived there all my life. I don't mind. I like good quality homes. It helps the tax base and our communities. But I also want to make sure that all the rules are met because a few years ago, five years ago, I asked my surveyor, he was the same surveyor you had, to come to the board and ask for a variance of eight feet. I had a property, existing property that we lived on for almost 100 years. And my property, just squared my property up, the sale of the property of my deceased son was 192 feet and I got denied.
You got denied?
I got denied.
By the board?
By the board.
When was this?
A hundred years ago. Well, plus the surveyor misled me because I called it the next day. He called me next day and he said, I want to let you know that you got denied.
Let me back you, back up on that. I don't know who he made it to. I've been on the board for eight years. I've missed two meetings in eight years and I do not remember that ever coming before the board.
That's what we were told.
That's what we were told by Mark Gardner. And we were denied by eight feet. We were trying to square up our two properties and we were denied the eight feet.
Which is, sets like this, I want to make sure that everything is...
Right.
What's really good about having this kind of meeting, I look around, I see a lot of aged people more than many. The good thing about it is, is we had a lot of good, smart people back 30, 35 years ago, but all these things went into effect that makes a critical decision on our communities. And that's the reason we stuck to two acres and 200 feet. And now I'm here, well, that we may reduce that down to one acre. And I'm going to tell you, you do, there's going to be a lot of people in the community going to be upset.
It's a different issue. After the meeting, can we talk about that?
Yep.
Because that's what this board is for and we've made many concessions like that. And like I said, I've been on here for eight years.
It had probably been September of 2019.
It just left a vantage in my mouth because I thought I'd been...
We'll discuss that at another time.
Yeah, thanks.
But we'd like to see him maintaining the four because that's the whole.
Yes.
So it's four.
Yeah.
Four lots.
Terry, you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carol Sandlin?
Yes, the first objection I had was it's farm ground. Everybody keeps using up the farm ground to build subdivisions. What are our kids going to eat when they grow up? You know, there's no farm ground. Everybody's wanting to put a house on farm ground. The second objection I had was the amount of traffic out there. There are several sharp curves that you have to sit and wait until another person goes through the curve before you can go through it. Another objection is, I think it should, the ordinance should stand as it's written. Like Terry said, it's, it was written for a reason. And the reason is, it's farm ground. It should stay that way. And another question is the mound system. Are the mound systems going to, you could possibly work that they have to be put in front of the house. So you're going to have all these houses with mound systems?
That is totally up to the health department?
Well, I don't want mound systems across the room from me.
Most people don't want to look at a mound system in their front yard either.
There's no, nothing says it has to be, nothing says it has to be in the front if it is a mound. I don't...
Well, I know there are some people who've had to put it in front because they didn't have a choice when they bought the lot.
Well, that's, like I said, if the health department mandates that it has to be a mound or it has to be some kind of unconventional, that's what they are paid to do, to decide on those issues, what that ground needs to do to possibly be, or he can say, no, it will not work. That's, that's another branch of county government that takes care of that.
Well, I think the ordinance should stand.
Thank you. You're done? Billy Comer?
Yes. I know most of the people here, most of you are my neighbors.
Our family.
Our family. All of the property to the north of where this is being asked to be changed, my family and I own. We're really concerned.
And that is this property right here?
Right there and across Strauss Road, the next 200 acres is ours, all the way to the watershed lake. Okay? And every bit of that property drains on to us. All of it does. He knows that, I know it, the surveyor knows it. It all drains on me. Comes through me and goes into the watershed lake. We are, Carol said it very plainly, I was a commissioner whenever these ordinances were made. We battled this forever. And we wanted it to stay, this county to stay a rural county. Now, some of you may not agree with that. But that was a decision we made. And you'll say, well, why two acres and why the four parcels? That was to hopefully keep it more of a rural county. Some of the other people that are going to speak tonight will do a much better job than I will. We have letters from college students, we have letters from high school students that wish for it to be left like it is. Carol, some of it, very well. The biggest thing, the soil perks, we don't know what they're perfect out there. So we had the soil tested now. Did each one of the nine lots or 11 lots or whatever it is get tested? We don't know that. The traffic on Alsop Road already?
As far as I know, as far as I know, it has to be before a building permit can be issued.
I know that. The traffic on Alsop Road already is bad. I'm one of the few farmers still that use Alsop Road. I farmed that particular piece of property for 40 years, or longer, because my sister and her husband owned it. And we wish for it to stay agricultural. We don't want it to be resumé. I'll answer any questions.
This is not a resumé.
I know that, I know that. But that is the way it was stated on the paper that was sent out to us.
Right.
Okay? I'll answer any questions concerning why we did it in the comprehensive plan that you wished to have asked, that that's the way it was. And I think it's been a pretty good example because it's stuck.
I will ask you one. From my understanding, from the commissioners and people that were on this board before, Gary Green has been doing it for 37 years, he just happens to be sick tonight. He was there then. That was an issue to stop Indiana land and all that coming through and splitting farms and putting a rock road down through the center of them and issuing people 200 footer road frontage that wasn't approved by the county that then turns to be the county's problem 10 years down the road, that the people buying it did not understand that they owned and needed to maintain that road.
That's partially true. A lot of that, though, after the problem was created, that's when they came back to the commissioners, you know, and for us to solve.
Yes.
We didn't do a good job, obviously, to leg it out originally. This is on a blacktop road. All of my neighbors there is, you guys, oh, John, you've been out in that area, you know what it's like.
Was there today.
You know that it's, I was bailing hay today with it going down the road to the tractor and nine cars passing me between Alsop and Strauss. I counted because I was coming here. We're opposed to it. We want it left like it is.
Beth Fleaner?
My name is Beth Comer Fleaner. I own three pieces of property on Alsop Road. I own 2354 is my home address. We have rental property at 2387 and 2423. We own a total of about 100 acres with myself, my husband and my in-laws. I'm also here because I am the niece of Joanna Comer Scott, who was the previous owner of the land, and I am standing here to represent her tonight. Unfortunately, she passed away in 2016 after battling metastatic breast cancer. So she did not have the ability to really make her wishes known, but I know what her wishes are. I am a river friendly farmer recipient for my farm. We take really good care of our land. I'm very proud of that along with my husband. My father is also a river friendly farmer award recipient. And I think that's outstanding to have two recipients within a mile of each other. So we really respect our land, we really take care of it. I'm also a 4H member, 10-year 4H member. My father was a 10-year 4H member and I've raised three children that are 10-year 4H members, which I think is very important. I'm actually going to read a letter from my daughter. She was unable to be here. She's actually in Zionsville. But I'll read this letter. I think she emailed some of you. Okay. I'm just, I'm just going to read it out loud for a bit. Dear members of the Scott County Board of Zoning Appeals, my name is Ellie Fleaner. I am a Scottsburg High School class of 2020 graduate and I now hold a Bachelor of Science in Marketing from Butler University's Lacey School of Business. I am a daughter, a sister, a friend, Joanna Comer Scott's great niece, a 10-year 4H member, an FFA alumni, a palliative therapist, an entrepreneur, and most importantly, an individual born and raised in Scott County, Indiana, or Leota, to be exact. I am writing to you not just as a concerned citizen, but as a deeply invested member of this community whose family has called Scott County home for generations. The land that is now under threat of development is not just a parcel of dirt and grass. It is a living testament of the rich history, values and way of life that makes Scott County the special place it is. This land has been in my family for years. It is more than just a property. It's a, it holds memories, hard work and the very essence of what it means to be part of rural community. To consider developing this land for homes or businesses is to strip away the soul, soil, the soul of what Scott County represents. We are not a bustling metropolis or a faceless suburb. We are a small, tight knit community where neighbors know each other by name, where farms and open spaces define our landscape and where the values of hard work, integrity and community are more important than the bottom line of some developer's fake account. Scott County is known for its rural country way of life. This isn't just a slogan, it's a reality that has been cultivated over generations. Our land is not meant to be subdivided or sold off in the name of so-called progress. Progress should not mean erasing the very character and identity of our community. Instead, if the goal is truly to expand and to enrich our community, then let's focus on developing its character, not its real estate. Invest in our schools, our local businesses, our farms and the people who make this county what it is. Encourage incentives and strengthen our community bonds, not ones that pave over them. The Scott County I know and love is a place where everyone has each other's backs. It's a place where family histories are intertwined with the land, where generations have lived, worked and grown up together. It's not a place where we bulldoze our history and our heritage in favor of cookie cutter houses and strip malls. The decision to develop this land would be nothing short of betrayal. A betrayal of the values that make Scott County unique. A betrayal of the trust that we as residents place in you to protect our community. A betrayal of the generations who have built their lives on this land. Let me be clear, this development is not just a threat to my family's land, it is a threat to the very fabric of Scott County. Once you start down this path, there is no going back. You cannot unbuild a house, unpave a road, undestroy the memories and values that have been cultivated over decades. Is this legacy you want to leave? A Scott County that has sold out its history? A Scott County that has sold out its history, its identity, its soul for the sake of development? I urge you to reject any proposal that would allow for the development of this land. Do not let short-term gains overshadow the long-term damage that will be done in our community. Stand with the people of Scott County, stand with our history, stand with the future we want to build, a future that honors our past and preserves the way of life that makes this place truly great. Respectfully, Ellie Fleaner.
And you know what she said, I'd like to sum up. What legacy are you gonna leave? What's your legacy? You have children, you have grandchildren? Is your legacy doing what is right? Is your legacy to protect farmland, or is your legacy greed?
Can I ask you where you are on this map?
2354 South Alsup Road.
I don't have the address.
Can you clarify or can I clarify? Does anyone understand that this person who owns it could divide these up to themselves separately?
Say again?
The person who owns it could separate these things themselves and sell them separately.
If it gets passed, right?
No, if he sold them, I just wanna make sure we all understand that.
There's a, the deed could be separated.
Right, the owner of the property now is trying to sell it to him, could separate these parcels himself and sell them as individual. Is what I'm trying to, like, understand, is that? I don't think we can compel from one to keep thirty four acres.
Okay, show me where we're at, this is right.
This is the property.
I live right here, all I own is, so forty-two, forty-one, I live here.
You all built in there.
We built a new home way off the road, and then we own the two rental properties that were there.
So what kind of, when were those built?
Let me ask you this, what real property, is it just like a, what type of real property?
What do you mean?
Like, what is it, is it duplexes, are they houses?
No, it's, they're modulars that were there when we built the property.
Modulars?
Yeah, when we built the property, they were already there.
Who did you buy the property from?
Evermark.
I know where you're at. Charles Mayer.
I don't have anything, well, this is everybody else. I live on Alsup Road. David Church is a pretty good man, he does good construction, but then on the negative side of it, I don't think I want that damn many homes out there, but I live on Alsup, and it will get a little more heavy if he wants to maybe go back to four, plus the houses there, put some damn nice bigger homes out there, I'll go along with it. But right at this point, I don't think I'll go along with it.
I've come to ask a question. There are currently two homes on this broad piece of property. When we're talking about four, are we talking two additional parcels, or four additional parcels plus the two that are already there?
No, they don't have, they don't have.
I was gonna say, I think, yeah, that's already been deeded off different, I think we're talking about, there could be four no matter what, as it stands.
Does that count the one that's already there?
So the ordinance would just take the parcel and divide it into four, and the house is considered part of one of the four, correct?
Yes, that's the way I.
So you split three more on there, away from this right now?
Yes.
Four more, right? There's one there, and you split three more there, is that right?
Three splits.
I think I built four just to hold the property if nothing changes.
One, two, three, four.
I think in there are nine lots altogether, it's actually just another, it's actually eight splits, nine properties.
Possible, depending on how you. Who is that I was speaking to?
Terry, good to see you. My, Charlie was the last one to mess.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, Charlie was the last one to mess.
Okay, let me get, Paula Boris.
I'm kind of an outsider, so I'm not really here to, but definitely, I think this is awesome. Being a farmer myself, especially being in the Army, you know, and having to fight, this is really nice that everybody believes in something, no disrespect to your.
I have to stop you.
Okay.
This is the portion for the against or concerns. There'll be a portion in a minute for the fourth. I'm sorry, I have to do that.
Okay.
We'll get back to her. Marley Fleaner.
Hi, everyone, I'm Marley, I would like to say I'm seventeen years old. I was not asked to speak today, I'm speaking on behalf of a future generation farmer who will be obtaining land on Alsup Road in the future. So I am really against it, as someone who grew up on Alsup Road my whole life, lived there, know everyone on that road, I really don't think we need to be dividing up that property. I'm the great niece of Joanna Scott, the owner of the property, and she would have not wanted this. I also sent an email to John and Missy stating my concerns and my opinions about this whole ordeal. Instead of talking about my feelings portion, I would like to start with some statistics. So, I would just like to say, approximately thirty thousand species per year go extinct because of urbanization, building houses, expanding, all that stuff. That's three species an hour, three species an hour of animals dying. So us taking away that land for wildlife to live on is really cruel of us. Also, thirty-seven percent of emissions of pollution are caused by urbanization, building those houses, all right? I really don't think we need to be taking away the rights of those animals and also ruining our earth that we, God has so graciously given us to live on. I also would like to say, our roads out in Leota are not fit for this much population, this much transportation, okay? As a driver, as a new driver, I have almost been in a few accidents because of people turning on those sharp curves, the poor roads, they're not, my road has never been redone, I don't think. Alsup Road has never been redone, okay? They do the craps, you know, I see the craps, but they don't repave the road, okay? And if we have more and more people driving on those roads, think about the conditions and all the money that this county's gonna have to spend on repairing those roads. You might get money in, like, building these houses, and I know it's not set in stone that they are building the houses, this is just for dividing up the land, but we will not get, or you will not get the money in return from all the paving of the roads and people getting in accidents, thinking the moral of people getting hurt, you know, all those things. Also, you said you like 4-H, I'm not paying attention, but we all like 4-H, right, guys? Right, yeah. So the fourth H in our pledge is our health for better living. So would you rather have products like produce that come that are chemically, you know, tweaked and all that stuff, or would you like to have good, fresh-farmed products, right? You want things that are good for your health, okay? That is not 4-H, taking away our farmland, that's not 4-H, right? Also, people, there's children that live on that road, that if people are driving by, and people drive way too fast. As a teenager, I know that, okay? People are driving way too fast, those children are getting hurt, okay? And also, as an FFA member, we believe in the future of agriculture, and this is not the future of agriculture. I am so passionate about keeping our farmlands farmlands, because when I get older, when I grow up, I wanna be able to produce for the people. I wanna be able to serve, I wanna give them a good earth, clean air, good food, and we are not gonna be doing that by taking away our farmland. And that's all I really have to say. Any questions?
And now we come down to Andrew McDill.
I don't know if I can compete with Marley, but. So my thing is, why is our, I mean, the fifty or sixty people that showed up here tonight against this, why is our peace, our quiet, our country living, our country views, why is that being compromised to put money in a man's pocket that doesn't even live in the area? You know, he gets paid, and he moves on, and we're the ones that have to look at it, we're the ones that have to live with it.
Exactly, yep.
You know, and I feel like the ordinance was put into place to protect us, you know? And secondly, or I guess third, as others have mentioned, there's a whole family of people that live in that area, and I'm one of those. You know, so he's not putting a development just out in the country, he's putting it in a community of people that have lived there for a very long time.
Where are you on your relatives?
I'm on nineteen fifty-one Alsup. So I am on, let's see, where are we at here?
This is the front piece of question.
So I would be on this corner right down here.
So you're on.
Yeah, but. Everybody that's getting.
Is it the corner?
No, it's the next one right here. But everybody that's getting here has to go by this to get there. And I have kids and all that as well, animals, so I'm against it.
Does your family own that since it was deeded out west?
I mean, hundreds of years my family's been in the property.
The current owner is Bryant Connet from Lancaster, Kentucky, just to note that.
Current owner of the property.
Is Brian Connet from Lancaster, Kentucky?
That's the owner's nephew.
Yes, that was only because there was no bill.
Right, that's who, the personal representative deeded it over to this, to the Connet who is seeking to sell this to our applicant.
She said it was, can you say that again and turn around?
I'm sorry. It was deeded to, obviously, I guess, well, it was your relative, he passed away.
He was not my relative, he was married to my relative.
Relative, at any rate, he passed away, the estate was opened, Patricia Ann Connet was the personal representative.
Because it says owner Patricia Connet.
Yes, that, yeah, and that's actually, we were wrong because she deeded it to Brian Connet. And that is the current owner of this property, the thirty-four acres.
That's his nephew.
Right, so he is the owner of the property, and he wishes to sell it.
All right, that's fine.
And I talked to Patricia, she called me, she's seen it in the paper, and she corrected me that the property was owned by Brian. So I apologize, I'm new at this job, that was my fault.
She probably doesn't want her name associated because she's ashamed, but.
So that was a mistake on my part.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, that is all the checkmarks I have beside names that want to speak, if there's someone else.
I was on there. Carrie Gray.
I think it was on the other.
I should have wrote those.
That's fine, you're welcome to speak, let me, what is your name?
Carrie Gray.
Karen.
Carrie. My husband and I have lived in the area for forty-five years. We bought the property on the other road, now you can hear it from the other side of the property. Our property is sided on two sides by this property, and we are flat out against it. We moved to the area because of the peacefulness and the fact that I lived there when I was born. We moved back to the area because we love Leota, and it was peaceful, it's a loving community. I've seen all these kids that live on Alsup Road grow up.
Can you show me where you're at on this map?
She lives right next door to on Leon Road.
This is the property in question, this is the other road, this is.
It's right here.
That's you right there. How big a piece of property do you live on?
We just have a half acre.
You have a septic system?
Yes. Our property originally, I will show you. Our property was on this property that went on around, and it was actually, when it began, was a homestead. Some of Billy Comer's family homesteaded that whole, the whole square. And, I mean, but he builds these houses, they're in my backyard, literally in my backyard. I sure don't want.
Anyone else? Let's go with you first.
Hey, my name's Dignee Kemp, and I live on the backside of the property, 2759 South Comer Road. Emotion aside, because this is very emotional for all of us, I'm a newbie, I've only been here a couple of years, but it took years for us to find this slice of heaven, and it's pretty upsetting to think that it could be taken away. But has anybody considered the impact on the fire service with this large amount of homes coming into this area? I assume it's already been looking, but I've talked to some firemen with our local fire department, they can barely keep up with what we have going on out there now, much less the addition. I don't know, you guys have been here forever, you know way more than I do, I'm just bringing it up because it's not been discussed, discussed.
This person asked, I'll get to you then.
All right, I know I just already talked, but I just realized something else I'd like to say. So you said you don't want goats in people's backyards. We have a goat farm, we're not gonna get rid of our animals, they've been there for hundreds of years. I just did a heritage project for my junior honors block class, and I went back for, I think, maybe over a decade and a half of us living there with animals, with cows, you're gonna hear our donkey keehawing, everything. They can hear all the way on Comer, we can hear from Bethel Baptist Church down in Leota. And so the people who will live there if it does get approved will be complaining about the animals. I'm sorry, this is, you know, agriculture, this is a rural community, there will be animals, but there's nothing you can change that, unless you buy our land or kick us off or take away our animals, there's no way we're gonna get rid of our livestock, our way of income, our lifestyle. So you gotta really think about everybody else that's already living there before you go ahead and be like, "I'm not gonna let a goat in their backyard." Or goats get out all the time, okay, they're goats, they're gonna get out. I might leave the gate open when I feed, I'm seventeen years old, I mess up, you know? But you've just gotta think about everybody else that's living there before you, everybody else that has their roots planted in the ground, everybody else that worked so hard to get their lifestyle the way it is now.
I wonder if he's going with a donkey that way. We're gonna give it to Charlie.
I'll take my spot.
Okay.
I have a letter I'm gonna read from my mother in a second. My big concern is this, he says it's a split, not a zoning issue, correct? How many properties out there would be split like this before it becomes a zoning issue? Because once you've done one, then the next one.
There's already been other ones done.
Right.
This is not a unique situation.
I get that, but again, how, what does it take for it to become a zoning issue? So we're down, that's somewhere down the line.
Your county commissioners are in charge of setting.
The boundaries, correct?
The boundaries. The system has been spoke about to be redone for the last five, six, seven years because they think it's outdated, it's, I think, a cost issue. It takes a lot to write a new one and to.
So it's just like a continuation that things will go. So anyway, I live at 243, I'm at South Alsup Road, my mother is Marilyn Chamberlain, and this is a letter she would like me to write. Gentlemen, this decision you make will alter the lives of many people in this area of Philly Township. Would a subdivision be beneficial? That is a question. Almost thirty-five acres of land, mostly woods, to be destroyed by the building of eleven houses, I guess it's not eleven now, it's down to nine, what's the correct number?
Nine is what is in front of me.
Okay. Will be harmful to the health and well-being of residents as well as animals. I have seen on many occasions a bald eagle in the vicinity of Jerry Scott's property. Kentucky has spent millions of dollars planting trees and studying the effects on people who all benefited from the trees. Trees provide oxygen, cool the environment, allow birds and mammals a place to live and promote food. It is our duty to protect the land for future generations. I purchased the property, and she also has an adjacent property at 2856, I think that's Strauss. Joy and I purchased our home thirty years ago, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and everyone I have talked to about this division has opposed, it is not just for the habitat being destroyed, it is also the consequences of perhaps forty-one more residents plus their cars and something in garage. Thank you, Marilyn Chamberlain, P.S., I am not physically able to attend the meeting, I'll be there in spirit on the front row. I see mega houses, I see mega. I see mega houses, I see mega houses for sale in Scott County. I feel certain that nine houses could be found suitable for someone to rent and live in this area without building new ones. Thank you.
And you?
Brent Comer.
Brent Comer.
Seventeen eighty-seven South Allsepp. I wasn't gonna speak, John, but I'm afraid I did kick out the family if I said that. I, your representative, I don't know, I and I own that property. That's adjacent to my grandparents' property that wraps around Beth's property, Ryan's, and all the way around. So question one out of my, because I guarantee, I know I'm the dumbest guy in this room, definitely the dumbest Comer after everybody from my niece did such a good job. I, I know, I've heard this is not a subdivision, but I hear split. With the proposed split, educate me, what's the difference then between this many splits and a subdivision? How, how, how is that, how is that different?
You're asking me?
I'm asking this, yeah, the board.
Um, a subdivision is much more dense as far as lot size.
Road frontage.
Uh, the road frontage normally in a sub, in a subdivision is generated by roads built into the subdivision. Um, subdivisions go down to, uh, just over a quarter of an acre of lot, uh, thing to build a house. And like I said, the road, the roads are generated into the subdivision built. That's basically the difference. Most time a subdivision, most of the time, has to be on a sewer system, like a city sewer or some of the regional county sewer, uh, because those sized lots cannot do.
Well, like we live in a subdivision, but every lot in that subdivision is a minimum of two acres. So they chid the bar, and then we have roads that go throughout the subdivision. Persons, these were, every one of these homes will be sitting on a county road with road frontage.
Thank you, I, I really just didn't have that interest in that, so thank you.
Basically.
And John, my, my second point is, our, our twins couldn't be here today. They graduated a few years ago from Scottsburg. One's at Allstate School of Education, the other one's at Purdue School Bank. And we are very fortunate and very blessed in spite of their deaths, all due to their mother. Their plans are to move back to Philly Township, raise a family, farm, my son, take over the farm eventually for my mom, and keep that.
For the good generations.
Yeah, to keep, to keep that going. So I'm also here on their behalf as well, to good the year. I wanna make sure we're, we're giving communities that these kids, we've had too much, really good ones have to flight out of Scott County, and I wanna make sure the good ones, I think my kids are the best ever. Um, I wanna make sure we have something that those kids wanna come back to and wanna be in our community. And I, and I understand, I would, I would prefer zero houses on that property, but I also stand, understand the rule as it's written now, uh, before, and, and I guess I'm asking, one, I'm against the split completely, right? We have to live with the current rule. I respect the rule, and I respect a person's right to purchase the property and follow the rules that are there to do that. But I'm also very, very concerned about not only the current generation of people living in that area. We're, we're really proud, and as crazy as the Comer family is, we're pretty proud of what we've done in Philly Township. And so many people have mentioned family and community, and, and there's a lot of people in here that I know are very thankful, aren't blood related to the Comers, and I get why, you're very thankful for that. But also, I'm looking around this room, it doesn't take blood to be a family. All of us have cried together, sweat together in that community, helped one another when they needed it. And I, I do appreciate Mr. Church's comment about maybe he could help clean up the area. With that comment, I can only assume he's gonna live there and be part of that community, because you really can't improve a community unless you live in the community.
Amen.
Amen.
I just had a few comments to add to my question. Um, both he and I have driven all of our careers. You know, I drove to Louisville to work in the hospital twenty-five years. People are like, why do you make that drive and get up at four in the morning? Because I get to live here. I get to live on this land with my family. I look out, I see the pasture, I see the cows. I would much rather prefer that than to live in the city and have a shorter commute. I want that preserved for my niece, my nephews, my children, and hopefully grandchildren. That what our family so far has worked for.
John, I, I just have one other thing to add. Since I received the letter about coming before this board, we have received, my wife and I have received letters from other developers, three of them, wanting us to put a price on our property which is directly north.
I just got a text.
And I can use it as a threat to make my kids straighten up, but I.
It will never happen.
It'll never happen.
Never.
It'll never happen. And, and I'm not for sale, and I, I don't want this to change from agriculture. It's agriculture now, I want it to stay agriculture.
Single dwelling homes are allowed to be built on agricultural.
Well, we can still limit the rules.
That is the rule.
That is the rule, and stay with the rule. Rules are rules.
Well, that's why there is a, that's why there is an appeals board. So everything is different.
So we can talk about grading.
Gentleman in the back.
Randy Gray, you're my wife. I live on Leota Road too, you know, both of us. And I know a big part of you people out here are friendly. I mean, I can't think of my help at her, my mom and dad are out here. But I live on the other road, and my property goes next to his. I visit Scott often with my great, great grandson, take a long walk across the field. And he, he, we have a blast with him. And today, I figured, no, he wanted to keep that farmland. His farmland today, they, they got soybeans on it, they baled hay off right yesterday. It's been farmed ever since he died. And I, I got a whale, and I ain't had no problem with that whale. And ain't nobody been knocking on my door to see what's going on. I'm sorry. But, you know, I'm concerned, and when you start digging out there, what's gonna happen to my whale? Am I supposed to get on a sewer, get on the waterline? Who's gonna take a quick, take a trowel out there for me? Me or her?
That's, like I said, that's a matter of the Health Department.
What's that here? It's been farming on the well, but.
Same thing, if a farmer puts something on the ground, it can contaminate your well. That's a, that's another issue.
Been good.
Right, it's been great.
Except digging there.
That issue's because Billy Comer does not put chemicals in it.
Yeah.
That, I, I can't address that.
It's gotten, it's gotten so careful thing over. But he's gone out and said somebody.
He uses a little fertilizer.
For sure. I'm gonna make money off that with her.
And he sprays a, sprays a little bit of pesticide in it. I'm sure he touched it around. A little touch wrapped up here and there. No, wrapped up.
He does.
But that's here and there. I've got one more back in the back.
Thank you. You will not find me on the map, but I wanted to bring to attention to board. There are several people here, we don't live on that road. But we are from Vienna. We've had situations where we've had some problems with growing areas, developments, if you will. I appreciate the fact that you are honoring the agricultural, something that is in the county that's been brought up. My concern is the split. I realize it's legal, legit, and everything, but we don't want to see that become a precedent of what's going to happen to our land from now on. And I also just wanted to say, I would agree, there are many of us in here that are here because you have an obligation to all of the taxpayers in this county, not just these fine folks on this road, but to all of them. So it is a big decision that you are making tonight. We would ask you to make it with forethought, with everything that's been brought up much more eloquently than I. But we represent over a hundred and twenty-five people right now. So I'm speaking for that many people who could have been in here.
What, what is your name?
My name is B.J. Brandenburg. I represent Vienna Proud, and I've been authorized to speak for Vienna Proud, and I'm sure these folks that are members of it would agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So I live on Leota Road, twenty-eight forty, me and my wife.
What's your name?
Amy Seid. So I understand what's going on, and I understand what the, what the, what the policy is, the ordinance is. But I think this lady behind me made a very valid point. We purchased property out there for a reason, and our slice of heaven, we don't wanna see that go away. I totally understand if somebody wants to buy that property and build a house on it. I just think it should be somebody who's gonna buy it, split it up, and put houses on it, just for gains. Uh, just my opinion, again, the traffic and everything else. But again, there's a reason why we bought it, and I think it's incumbent of you guys to make sure that you protect that for us, like you work for us. So just my opinion.
Can I ask one last question?
Yes.
All right, so it's gonna be split, and the largest portion is eight acres, right?
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay, so let's just say I go buy that eight acres, and two years from now I wanna split it into two acres. That's, that's fair, right? I can come before the board and say, hey, I wanna split this eight acres into two, put four more houses on it?
Into two blocks. It would be.
Two acres, right, so that means four.
But you, at that point, you would have to ask for a subdivision or, because it doesn't have the road frontage for those spots.
Can we see where the eight acres squatted on the back there? To see if it has the road frontage to cover that up?
Yeah, how much road frontage, sorry, how much road frontage do you need?
Two hundred?
Two, two hundred feet.
Two hundred? And that, so it's gonna have two hundred as well, right?
Excuse me?
How much road frontage do you need to put a subdivision on?
You don't have to have, only a, only a, only an entrance.
But you're saying for each individual, two acres, it has to have two hundred feet of road frontage?
Yes, that is.
Across the front.
That is the.
Right, so right now, currently, the way this should be split is on that acre, eight acres, is there four different parcels that would be, I told you, worth eight hundred feet of road frontage?
And what is, I, the numbers are too small. What is, I can't read it. What, what is that footage of that? Actually, is that your question? I'll address that in a minute. Let's get through this part of it. The eight acres has four hundred and twelve.
So it would be divided into quite four.
It would have to, no, just once.
Be split one time. And.
It would have to, it would have to come here and be approved.
Help me help me out, under, help me understand why.
Yeah, because up to four.
If it's a lot that can be split into four, and then.
It can be split into four.
No, currently, the thirty-four acres can be split into four?
It can be four without a variance. So it could be, they're basically looking at a difference between five houses there and nine houses. He wants to put five houses there, he can do that, and he doesn't need this board's permission.
Right. He can put four houses.
Yeah.
Four splits, but there's already houses there, four splits, that's five, one, two, three, four, so. Four additional houses. So it'd be, technically, you could do that. So he wants to do, but at any rate, so there would be that, he doesn't have, so, but I think the actual question.
When you draw four lines spreading the property, you end up with five pieces. You, I mean, draw on paper.
Okay, well, I'm looking at a square and dividing it into four pieces.
Okay.
That's two, that would be two.
That's just two splits.
That'd be two splits.
Right.
There's already one house, so we happen to split it in four more. It just said split into four, so that house has to go in one of the splits.
Right, so that's why there'd be just four additional.
Three. Three, no, it'd be three.
It says on the, it says on the four split.
Yes.
And each of. It's split into lines.
But a four, four dividing lines will provide.
Five.
Five parcels. Does that make sense?
It's gonna be four.
Four, yes.
Yeah, and what he's asking then is to be able to divide it, and why he doesn't have to rezone it is that he went down to, because it's gonna be able to do the two hundred frontage, uh, the road frontage and the two acres, so he doesn't have to rezone it. He can, without this board's permission, could divide it four ways and add that. He's asking to be able to still stay in the two acres, two hundred feet of roadage, or road frontage, just be able to split it more right now.
So with that being said, would it not be the same for somebody to go in and divide that other two plots up? They not have to go before the board, am I not correct in saying?
They would have to go before the board because the parcel has already been split.
Yeah, it's already been, yeah, you can't, yeah, the parcel.
You can't just keep redoing it.
Yeah, you just can't, you, yeah.
It's on the, in the cartographer's office or whoever that shows the splits.
Cool, help, help me understand, if we were to only get three more, because we already have one.
Four.
All right, we'll go with the four more, but we already have one, so one is carved out. If we were doing four more, where would that layout, what would that layout look like? We haven't done that.
We haven't done that.
Is there potential that he could, did this stuff go through? He splits it so that he builds four more on half of it? And then he owns this other half, and then in a little bit he can do four more on that?
No, you can't, no, you just, the split is the split.
It would be used up. Yeah, you could put them a smaller, you could make them two.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
You can make them two acres, two hundred fit, two hundred foot.
Yes, road frontage.
Road frontage to the inch.
Okay.
And then all the rest of it could not be split again without a variance.
And coming before the board again and doing the same thing.
Doing exactly what we're doing here.
Yeah, or, or, or be put before the board to become a subdivision, have to get that, because now we're looking at back by, you know what? So we'd be dealing with wholly set of rules after that happened.
But if we were only put in, I'm sorry, if we were only put in a four additional more, each one would have two hundred road frontage.
No, he could have, he could have whatever. That's speculation, I don't know. One of them two hundred, next one six hundred, next one five hundred.
Mr. Fleener in yellow hats, try. I, I know you guys answered my question, that's, the only thing I would ask is, John, you had mentioned earlier that what's been presented is nine lots here tonight, or eight, eight towers reported. Is there, my question's gonna be, there's been some comments about eleven, is there possibly a negative increase?
Whatever is spoke about here and drawn out here, uh, if this were to go through, it has to be what is drawn here, that can't be changed later. If, if anything were to change, it would have to come back through this board for that. So it's, what's on this paper here is what is being asked for. That can't be changed without another here.
The only thing, nobody wants change, I mean, in any sense. And, I, I'm not bored by the needs. Um, but the rules are the rules, and it can be split into four parts, that's the rules. I just ask, guys, don't bury it.
Yeah.
I mean, stick, stick.
We're the ones that have to deal with it, not you.
He has nothing in it, all he has in it is to make money, that's all he wants. That's right. This is our lives. All he wants is money, that's it. How much money's enough?
I'd like to find out. If everyone has had a chance to speak, anyone else that needs to? We got one more.
So I'm Chris Ritchie, and I live at two nine two five South Allsepp Road. Um, I was raised in Austin, in the middle of town with my momma. I didn't auto-cup your living until I moved out to Allsepp, Leota, and seen Billy, and boy, did I start sneezing. I love it, but I make sure I take my Claritin. Um, I love, I love you guys though so much. I have never felt more of a family than I have when I moved out there. Um, you know, you see the deers, like she talked about earlier, you know, you see the deers, the coyotes, are they peasants? Yes, but that's their home, you know, we moved into their home. Um, I just wanna make a few points. My mother-in-law fell December of twenty twenty-two, and it took EMS fifteen minutes to get out there to us. They went to the wrong house twice. Imagine if there was more houses across the road. Me being, sorry, me being in the healthcare field, and I know other people in here can dodge too, I held my mother-in-law's pulse until they got there, and they went to the wrong house. So not only was, you know, my spouse in wheelchair happened to do the same thing, but they went to the wrong house twice, not once, not twice. I was running down the driveway trying to tell them. But anyways, you know, just the simplicity, like, it would be an eyesore to have houses. When that land first went for sale, I was like, somebody's gonna buy that, they're gonna keep that land so we can watch them farm. I didn't come from farmers, I came from the complete opposite. Um, but I can tell you right now, not coming from farming and to watch it happen, I'm so thankful for that. And I could not hope anymore for than to me to take my morning walks and to have a new house built there, maybe a better house, you know, than what's there now, and still see that farming land. I understand you have a job to do, but also, I love this community, and nothing compares, nothing, and that's all. I understand you have a job to do, but also I love this community and nothing compares, nothing. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. So anyone else needs to speak? I'm about to close the public portion.
Um, you still got to do the part that are going to report, right, in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Bill Nichols. I live on, um, I'm not a Comer, but I live on Comer Road. But, uh, uh, the donkey brain and I hear that. The eagle flies and gets fish out of my pond and all that. And I don't want to lose that. I can see all the, the trees being taken down as you develop all this. I'm totally against it.
I want to sit my.
So I also live on Leota with my husband. And what she just said got me tickled because we were outside on our pond one day, turned around and looked and our neighbor's cows were all in our front yard. So together, we all got on our four-wheelers, we're out in the middle of the roads, there's a lot of traffic so that we could get these cows back into their property safely. If we have more houses out there and all this traffic out there, somebody's going to get hurt running into cows or donkeys or whatever, you know? But we all stick together. We're all out there trying to help each other. You know, it's not affecting us exactly. We're on the backside of Leota. But we still have our neighbors that we deal with on a regular basis and they know, they know, they can come to us. Billy's been to my house many times. Hey, have you seen our cows? You know, so I just think that's something, you know, you definitely should consider that more houses, more people, more cars, it's going to be an issue.
I'm going to say there is, there has been an incident where people have hit cattle and have tore up their cars. And what are we going to do? They're animals. So you don't open your yard, don't open Leota, don't go out there.
Everyone had their chance. I don't want to leave anybody out, but I don't want to go over things over and over and over either. At this point, I'm going to close the public opposition portion of this meeting. I'm going to open up the in favor public portion of this meeting. If anyone wants to speak in favor, uh, state your name and see what you got. Okay. At this point, I'm going to totally close the public portion of the meeting. And at this point, does anyone on the board have any questions that they need of the applicant? What I'd ask is anything you need to have clarity on.
I think I've got pretty much.
Uh, E. David, so tell me, uh, is, is bringing in this, the, the current project to us now, is that kind of a, it's easier that way kind of situation? Are there other alternatives that the seller could like split it once and then sell it separately? And then the next buyer can come in and split it as many times that we allow as far as the county goes? Is this just kind of making it convenient for the current buyer that can literally be addressed, you know, because to, for goodwill purposes for the neighbors?
Well, a lot of the questions were about the alternative. Simple alternative would be to create a subdivision.
Yeah.
And as I said in the beginning, I've done twenty-five subdivisions. The last one I did in Scott County was across from the airport, Rosewood Point. And I did one in Lexington. Rosewood Point is a subdivision, but I made all the lots two to five acres. And I mean, that's beautiful. Good down there today. There's nice homes down there. So to answer your question, I, at my age, I don't want to do a subdivision. Well, because, you know, you run out of time and if you had forty lots on there or a hundred and twenty, Monday night, uh, a lady in the back row went to the meeting for the city council. And we got approval for a hundred and fifty lots and back of John Jones. So I don't think any of these folks would like on thirty acres to have a hundred homes. In fact, I guarantee you they wouldn't want it. So why would I want that bad? I've been part of the community since nineteen eighty. I've lived in the community since two thousand and five. I bought the Questwood Golf course in two thousand and ten when the owner had financial trouble and will keep it as part of the community. And you can't leave all the people that go out there. I mean, there's kids, they're not four H kids, but they're involved with school, athletics and everything also. To answer your question, there is an alternative. I selected the easy way to do it, the professional way to do it, to keep the integrity of out there on real road and et cetera. So, so to answer your question, yeah, I could have done Plan C.
But there's no Plan C. There's no other alternative that the, but the seller, for example, can that seller split it himself? Have you sell separate parcels and then whoever could buy it and get split as, you know, as many times as we like?
On that eight acres, and the reason I left the eight acres is Bean Field next to Comer's Bean Field. I think it looks great. So that's one reason I left it. But that, the buyer of the eight acres could come in with an easement, which I've done in the past. You put an easement in nine hundred feet, you do a cul-de-sac, you put houses on both sides of it. And that eight, eight or nine acres, you might have to improve it a little bit, but we could hypothetically have twenty-four houses next to the bean field.
No, the bean field is not by the house.
I'm sorry.
The bean field is not by the house.
Which house?
The house is there. The house is there.
The eight acres isn't the house though.
The present house.
The bean field is right on the other side of the hay.
So where's the eight acres?
It's part of the beans, just south of the bean. If you're out there driving, you can see the stake.
I see the stake. I live right across the river.
Well, you saw the stake there by the white pillar. That's probably the phone pillar, right there.
Yeah, I see that stake.
Okay. So what's your question?
Well, where's the eight acres at?
Starting at that point, the northerly point next to the farmland moving south. I think it's four hundred and twelve feet. And something else, the lady that lives, I think it's the lady in the yellow house that lives next to the hayfield. Um, had a question about something that I made a lot of notes. So, um, so anyway, that's that one. I would not probably buy the property if we had to put mounds in there for septic. And that's why I spent five hundred dollars per lot to have Spence come out and do the soil tests to make sure we can do the septic system. There's only one house on the property, not two. The existing house has an underground system. It's down over the bank and park and back of the pole barn. So that's, that's the existing one right there. Um, my question is, since it's been for sale for some time and I bought it for less than the asking price, which is probably really competitive for farmland today. You know, we all want to buy land at seventy, eight, nine thousand an acre.
Nobody can pay for anything.
For ten thousand dollars an acre, less than ten thousand dollars an acre. I had one farmer tell me last week, if I don't buy it, the farmer's going to buy it.
That'd be great.
Great. The point is, it's been on the market. I mean, we all could buy it.
The reason why we can't buy it is because I do not believe in developing twenty-five subdivisions.
We can keep it as a, I don't, not here to.
But that's what you're doing and that's great. That is your.
Let me stop. Let me stop. The public portion of this is closed. I'm sorry.
He asked a question.
We have to do it.
Now, my point is, if the gentleman that owned it before, he gave it to his sister that sold it to her son, which is the nephew of the owner.
She didn't sell it. He inherited it. The property was divided, Jerry owned two parcels and it was divided between two nephews.
It was for sale. I'm buying it from a family member.
Pat never owned it. She was executor.
I don't, I don't know the details. I didn't get it. So I think that about the water, um, it's probably going to be city water. And so those are the main things I just want to address. I'm part of the community. Been there all these years and, um, still part of the community.
Not that community because you wouldn't want to do it if you were.
I'm sorry, what?
Not that community because you wouldn't want to do it if you were.
No, I mean, I live in Scottsburg.
Not that. Well, then build it by your community.
I'm part of the community.
Just, I can add, I'd address one, let me add.
No, it's closed. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have to stop it or this will go all down. At this point, I'm going to close all parts of it. At this point, I will take a motion to, the options are to pass the, uh, what's the word?
The variance. The motion, yeah.
The variance for additional splits.
The variance, yeah.
Uh, I will take a motion to pass it with stipulations or take a motion to deny it. The floor is open for a motion.
Why are there stipulations?
Uh, if there's extenuating circumstances, it's said, okay, we say it has to be this or this or this. It doesn't really apply here, but it is part of the state statute.
Does it not just leave it open? Could we pass it with stipulations and leaves it open right now?
No, if we pass it with stipulations, we have to state what those stipulations are.
Okay.
And different things we do, it has, that's a component of it. Really, tonight I don't think that applies, but in the state statutes, you have to put that option out there. So at this point done, I'm hoping for a motion.
A motion.
I'm going to make a motion to deny. I just feel like the other alternatives may be a better, better alternative. I'm going to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. It is denied. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.